Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 16th work session of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. It's a pleasure to have each of you here. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, Commissioners. We're going to just jump right in with our work session unless you have any questions before we get started. First of all, I would note this is our rescheduled meeting from the second during -- on Election Day, and as follows is our normal process to have the Planning Commission two weeks after events such as those. So with the -- without any further delays here, we're going to ask Stacy Porter to come forward, and she will give you the presentation on our Chesapeake Bay exception application, 21-04.
Make sure you all can hear me. All right. My name is Stacy Porter, and I'm a senior planner with the planning department, and I'll provide an overview of the applicant's request. And today, we have the request by Raphael L. Allen requesting a Chesapeake Bay exception for a swimming pool within the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area's 100-foot buffer at 2440 Sterling Point Drive. I thought this slide would be helpful so we can discuss Chesapeake Bay exceptions again and why they come before you all. This slide actually shows the Resource Protection Area buffer. It is immediately adjacent to the tidal wetland area along that landward edge of the tidal wetlands. There's that 100-foot buffer split into two sections. There's the 50-foot seaward buffer and the 50-foot landward buffer. And so I did mention here on this slide that all accessory structures need to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and any appeals go to Circuit Court. All right. And then also, I want to make sure it's clear that the Resource Protection Area landward buffer is what we're focusing on today. That is where the proposed swimming pool would be located. The applicant's property is located in the Sterling Point neighborhood. The zoning is general residential GR. The property is approximately 16,000 square feet in size and is largely encompassed by that Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area. And as you can see in the photo, the property contains a two-story brick structure, 2,403 square foot, single-family home constructed in 1956. The surrounding area would be that Sterling Point subdivision, which is primarily characterized by single-family lot development, also zoned general residential GR. And today, at your place settings, you all did receive an updated copy of the applicant's concept plan, and the applicant will be available at the public hearing to discuss his proposal. The updated plan just showed the updated -- the understory tree species, and I'll discuss that in just a moment. The conceptual site plan before you all shows the proposed 15-by-25-foot in-ground swimming pool with a three-foot-wide concrete surround, which I've highlighted in yellow, as you can see on this slide. The proposal will require 1,964 square feet of land disturbance within that Resource Protection Area. And I've highlighted in blue the blue lines of the 100-foot buffer, the landward, and the 50-foot seaward buffers. And as I earlier mentioned, the finished swimming pool will be solely located in that landward buffer. The Chesapeake Bay ordinance requires the submittal of a water quality impact assessment, also known as a WQIA. The applicant's WQIA indicates that five planting units would be required. One planting unit is one canopy tree, two understory trees, and three shrubs. The species that were selected by the applicant, the canopy would be the river birch, and the understory would be the dogwood, and the shore juniper would be the small shrubs. Should you choose to approve the applicant's request, establishment of all five planting units would be made a condition of approval. Though the Chesapeake Bay ordinance supports the full preservation of the 100-foot buffer, it does allow for the single-family home and necessary utilities. Accessory structures are not permitted, but right in the buffer, it must be reviewed as a special exception using criteria listed in Portsmouth City Code Section 9.1-12C. Staff did not find the applicant's submittal to meet the exception criteria outlined in this code section, as the proposal is not considered minimized land disturbance and presents a self-imposed condition. Further, the approval of the request would be precedent-setting, as the city has no record of approving a swimming pool within that Resource Protection Area buffer. Staff recommends the denial of the request. Planning Commission provides the city's final determination on Chesapeake Bay exception request. The commission also has the authority to request additional information or amendments to the applicant's submittal if desired to allow the development to more closely meet the purpose and intent of the Bay ordinance. Staff has included suggested conditions for your consideration should you choose to approve the applicant's request. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Porter? No? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to our second item. That's going to be presented by Carl Jackson. It's Street Closure 21-02.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This is application S. 2102. Highland Biltmore, Thomas D. Ford, and Teresa Cox Ford request the closure of a portion of an alleyway that will be evenly divided and maintained by the adjoining property owners. The proposed closure area is an unimproved grassy alleyway between Truxton and Hanson Avenue. Closure area is parallel to Truxton Avenue and the butts for single-family properties on Hanson Avenue, at 603 Hanson Avenue, and at 200, 204, and 208 Truxton Avenue. There are no utilities or power lines that are present on the property, and the comprehensive plan designates the property for a single-family residential low-to-medium-density development. The street closure area is surrounded to the north by Hanson Avenue across from single-family To the south and east of the closure area, surrounded by single-family homes, which are all zoned urban residential. To the west is the Toddler Time Daycare Center, owned by the applicant and zoned urban residential. The applicants have regularly maintained the alleyway by cutting the grass and removing trash, but they continue to observe criminal activity and loitering within the alleyway that poses a threat to the daycare center youth that are just located in that playground area next to the closure area. The other adjoining property owners, by the way, have also expressed similar concerns about the criminal activity in the area. The applicants are proposing to close the alleyway in order to reduce crime, loitering, and litter in the area, and the applicant would like the closure area to be evenly divided amongst the adjacent property owners at 200, 204, and 208 Truxton Avenues. And those adjacent property owners have also agreed to the proposal and have signed off on the application. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the applicant's request for the closure of a portion of an alleyway adjacent to the applicant's daycare and property owners along Truxton Avenue. Staff finds that the proposed condition -- the proposed closure of the alleyway is consistent with the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and will support the needs of the adjacent property owners in the area. I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Jackson, the adjoining property owners have agreed to this?
Yes, they have.
Because that's going to increase their lot sizes?
Yes, they're aware of that, and one of the conditions is that they will have to maintain that additional lot. We did find that one of the homes actually is sort of encroaching already in the alleyway itself, you know, so it's something that they're kind of already living with now.
Okay. What are the other conditions?
The other conditions, sir, happen to be -- so the alleyway will be evenly divided amongst the adjacent property owners, as I mentioned. It will require a minor subdivision of the property, which they can get through the city, and those property owners will have to maintain the alleyway. The city will still retain an easement over that property, and of course, they'll have to be in compliance with all state and local codes, and of course, make sure that all fees and dues have been paid to the city treasurer.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Mr. Jackson?
Yes. Hi, I have a question. Regarding the easement that the city is going to maintain, what would -- what is that easement anticipated for, if anything?
Well, they wouldn't maintain it, but they would just have access, just in case for any purposes, you know, if there's a utility issue. There are no utilities on that property, but if there are on adjacent properties, it's standard procedure that we have with these closures, just so that the city, if for any reason, needs to access the property, they have that easement.
Okay. Would the homeowners be permitted to put sheds along the rears of the property over the easements? Is that something that they could get permission for, encroachment?
They probably have to go through zoning, because I know there's some setback requirements that have to be maintained. So, yeah, they'd have to go through zoning for that first.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Our third item listed on your work session is a street name change. Just want to advise the Commissioners, that application has been moved to your December Planning Commission meeting. That occurred because, following the advertisement of the request for the street name change, there was a modification made to the length of the street that was going to have its name changed, so the application and the legal ad no longer matched. In order to make sure those two things are in concert with each other, this has been moved back to your December 7th Planning Commission meeting date and properly advertised for that. Any questions on that?
So, does that need to be -- do we need to have that open today?
No, you just need to -- we just need to announce that it's been moved to the December 7th meeting.
So that's the function of--
There's no need to open the public hearing.
So that's a function of just an announcement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. We have one last item for you, Use Permit 21-17. Stacy Porter is going to present that. That's for a request for a -- what's that, a four-unit townhouse project?
Again, good afternoon. Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department, and I'll provide an overview of the applicant's request for a use permit. It's Lloyd Vaughn, Jr., requesting a use permit for four townhomes at 816 Randolph Street, and the property is zoned neighborhood mixed-use and is further described as Tax Map 55, Parcel The property is located in the Prentice Place neighborhood. Is a -- the property is vacant of site improvements and is approximately 14,000 square feet in size, and I'll now provide an overview of the surrounding area. To the north are multifamily residential structures, zoned neighborhood mixed-use NMU. To the east is vacant property zone downtown T4. To the west is vacant property, Annie Church Zone Neighborhood Mixed Use NMU, and to the south apartments are located there, zoned multifamily urban residential URM. This was the submitted conceptual site plan. The submitted proposal indicates that the property will be subdivided into four lots to accommodate four townhomes. Each of the two interior lots will have a width of 27.5 feet and a lot area of 3,100 square feet. Each of the exterior lots will have a width of 35 feet and a lot area of 3,900 square feet. Should the use permit receive city council approval, the development will be reviewed through the city's site plan review process. The applicant submitted these example building elevations for the front and side for consideration by the governing body. Should the use permit receive approval, the applicant would provide the city final architecturally-commissioned elevations that are in substantial conformity to what is presented here. All four two-story townhomes will be developed with three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, a rear surface patio, and one car garage. The units will be developed to provide between 1,400 to 1,600 square feet of living space. Each townhome will be provided one off-street parking space and one garage parking space. According to the zoning ordinance, the parking requirement for each townhome is two off-street vehicle parking spaces and one bicycle space for every four units. The parking requirement and all other site development aspects will receive formal review for compliance with the zoning ordinance during the site plan review process. Though the comprehensive plan recommends commercial development for the property at 816 Randolph Street, staff finds that the property is also appropriate for residential development, as the parcel is located in a low-visibility area and primarily characterized by residential development. Further, the plan indicates that the property is located within a neighborhood investment-focused area, which encourages redevelopment and reinvestment. The applicant's request to develop a vacant parcel meets the goal of the comprehensive plan. With the conditions recommended by staff, the proposal meets the zoning ordinance's requirements. Therefore, staff recommends the approval of the applicant's request, and that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Porter? Yes?
Hi, Ms. Porter. I just have one question. If you could just give me perhaps an example of a commercial use that would not need a use permit in that area?
You know, without the zoning ordinance, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I could find out. Would you like me to get you some information when we take a little break?
I'm just thinking, yeah, if it was like a convenience store or like a neighborhood, you know, insurance or something. It's definitely a lot of residential around it.
Yes.
Like you said, it would be compatible, but I just wanted to know maybe something, you know, just in case it comes up.
Sure, sure. I'll run and get that zoning ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the staff presentations for today's meeting.
Are there any other items we need to discuss at the work session? There being none, we will convene at 1:30 for our regular meeting. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, being held in the City Council's chamber. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood? Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner G. Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Commissioner Page?
Present.
Commissioner Barnes?
Present.
Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you have the minutes of the October 5th, 2021, public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the October 5th, 2021, public hearing. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their December 14th, 2021, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first public hearing item, CBE-21-04 Sterling Point. Raphael L. Allen requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for a swimming pool within the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area's 100-foot buffer at 2440 Sterling Point Drive. The property is zoned general residential GR and is further described as Tax Map 783, Parcel 39. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends low-to-medium-single-family residential development for the property. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Raphael Allen. I reside at--
Can you speak on--
Is this better? Good, okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Raphael Allen. I reside at 2440 Sterling Point Drive in Portsmouth, Virginia. First, please allow me an opportunity that hopefully doesn't take away too much of my time to thank Stacy Porter for all of her assistance. She's been truly helpful and a real resource of knowledge as we worked towards being here today. So, thank you again, Stacy. I appreciate it. As the commission is aware, I'm here seeking approval for a variance, which will allow me to work within the 100-foot CBBA, but outside of the critical 50-foot seaward buffer. I would be remiss if I didn't quickly review the overarching intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. I did a lot of research. It's been a long time since we moved in, about four years ago, and our intent was, at some point, to try to find a way to have a pool. The Act is not to simply prevent development within the CBBA, but to protect and improve a property's impact on water quality by reducing stormwater runoff of non-point source pollution through thoughtful land management and land use planning. When it rains, pollutants from developed and undeveloped land are picked up in stormwater runoff and deposited into rivers and streams. The most effective way to achieve the CBA's intent is to introduce buffers of water quality protecting vegetation and landscaping, aka nutrient uptake plants. At the heart of the Act is a concept that land can be used and developed, but such use would require a thoughtful plan to minimize possible negative impacts on water quality. The only vegetation being disturbed is turf grass, which has zero impact on water quality. It actually has an adverse effect, as it is regularly fertilized and clippings often runoff into the waterway. You'll see in my site plan that the proposed scope of work will not remove any existing trees, bushes, or shrubs. The plan will, however, introduce an additional 30 nutrient uptake plants by way of five large canopy trees, 10 understory trees, and 15 bushes. In totality, this will significantly improve my property's buffer and its impact on the river's water quality by reducing pollutant runoff. Additionally, as you may note, the only improvement within the CBBA on my property is my existing home. 91% of my property is encumbered by the Act, which I believe imposes a true hardship with respect to any thoughtful land improvement, which will increase my property's value in our city's tax base. I think it also important to share that the proposed permanent disturbed area is only 2.7% of the total 100-foot buffer. I would also note that my proposed improvement would actually capture stormwater, further reducing runoff into the river. I'm not here today to lecture anyone about the CBBA, but to discuss a path forward on achieving approval from the commission on what I believe to be a reasonable request, which includes a thoughtful site plan and scope of work. You will see in the Planning Department's response to my application, on page six, its proposed conditions. It notes that should the variance be approved by the Planning Commission, certain conditions must be met. Those conditions, which pertain to the actual proposed work, have been met. My intent is to fully meet the conditions noted, as I respect and take seriously the Act and the approval process, which is why I'm here today asking for permission and not forgiveness for performing work without proper approval from our city's Planning Commission. I've lived here in the city of Portsmouth now for over 10 years, and I love it here and have found what will hopefully be my forever neighbors, neighborhood, and home. I love it here, and I appreciate everything and your guys' time. I appreciate your consideration and will stand by to answer any questions you may have with respect to the requests, and am open to any suggestions you may have to hopefully achieve a favorable outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Allen? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE-21-04. I do have one registered speaker. As I call your name, please step forward. You will have up to five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Mr. Mark Yodali Yotrowski.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, Honorable Commissioners, and other neighbors. I was very interested to hear my nearby neighbors, who are about 4/10 of a mile apart in the same neighborhood, discuss his proposal in terms of the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. That is a piece of legislation that's very near and dear to my heart. It will become increasingly important in this era of rapid climate change and sea level rise, and so the health of the bay and the health of the neighborhoods and communities that border the bay are very much impacted by what kind of stewardship our governing bodies and their appointed boards engage in to ensure that the conditions laid out in the Act are honored. So, the applicant made a very convincing argument, or he made several convincing arguments, about how this would not be a detriment, but rather a benefit to the bay. And I've had, you know, a few moments to process them, but not a lot of time to mull them over. I want to say that I remain skeptical, although I think the arguments were well-made, because the property itself has quite an inclined surface. I've only seen what I can see from the road. I walk and ride my bicycle on that stretch of Sterling Point Drive frequently, but there tends to -- there is a visible incline that you can see from adjacent areas, and those are the trickiest to build on. I'm sure that -- I'm guessing that there will be some sort of slope stabilization required to put a pool there. Nobody builds a pool that is inclined, so there will have to be some filling that will occur, and that may well have a destabilizing effect on the overall property in the long run. One of the characteristics of this particular era in human history is we are subject to pop-up storms-- pop-up storms that dump very large quantities of rain in very short order. Summer of last year, I left my home to go to the fitness center, and in the hour and a half that I was gone, nearly two inches of rain had fallen. I'd made no preparations. My garage sits at the end of a small slope compared to my neighbor's slope, and when I got home, there was already an inch of water stacked up against the garage doors. So, what we have seen in the past, what we have taken as the normal, is not going to be the normal for the future. So, I have concerns about the ability of this improvement to withstand the new harsher and less predictable conditions. So, I would stand with the Planning Department's recommendation that you deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mister Larry Berry. Have up to five minutes to speak, sir.
Good afternoon. Pleasure to be here in front of you today. I'm just gonna kind of cover a little bit more detail some of the items that were mentioned by Mister Allen. My name is Larry Berry. I'm a professional engineer. I have been doing land design and development work in all of the local municipalities for almost fifty years now. I am a senior principal with the firm of AES. Our headquarters in Williamsburg. I am in the Chesapeake office. I've known this...
Sir, can you...
I'm sorry. You have to almost lean forward. I'm sorry. I said I'm a senior principal with the firm of AES. Our headquartered out of Williamsburg, and I am in the Chesapeake office. Several of the things that, you know, and we developed the plan that was submitted as part of the application, and when Mister Allen first called me about doing this pool, he mentioned in his speech that he had spent a lot of time over the last several years looking at the Chesapeake Bay ordinance, and I've been involved with applications, you know, both inside of and outside of and, you know, doing things over the years. So, that first thing I told him was that there's going to be very strict rules and regulations when you do anything nearby or even inside the landward buffer, and we don't even need to discuss doing anything in the seaward buffer because that's pretty much sacred ground, and we almost never can touch that. As part of our development plan, we also encouraged him to do as small of a pool as possible. The pool he had originally thought about doing, based on the dimensions that his, a couple of his pool people that he had chatted with, would have been a pretty standard size that I've seen other people do in their backyards. This particular pool and this plan is forty percent smaller, rather than having the typical four-foot walks around it, eight feet on one end for lawn setting. We only put three-foot of concrete around all the perimeters. We pulled the pool as close to the building as we could. There are some hydrangeas that were fairly young that were up against the house that, you know, he's going to dig up and save and then replant, and they're only five feet off the house. The last speaker spoke to the fact that as he's gone by the site, the ground falls off to the river, and it in fact does several feet. On our plan, we've indicated how the slope would be put in from the far side of the pool down to the ground, and took all of that area into the disturbed area that we've calculated, which is only, I think our total final disturbed area is going to be only like six-hundred-and-fifty square feet out of the total site. As Mister Allen mentioned, the Chesapeake Bay impacts over ninety percent of his lot, and that's the platted lot, and so it's like if you add in the water, it's about ninety-two percent, take the water out of it. This impact is very minimal, and to, I thought the gentleman made a very good point about the fact that the land slopes and all, any runoff that hits the back area of his backyard, even from the street, is going to run directly into the river now, as Mister Allen mentioned. The land only has grass, and obviously if it's cut and mowed and fertilized, you're going to get those, all of those runoffs are going to go directly into the river. We put our planning in that's part of the code. That planning will intercept that runoff and filter it, which is part of the reason why, you know, that's a pretty big element in any time I have done these applications, is to put a stream of planning at the foot of the edge of the wetlands so that that plant, those plants will filter that runoff, which is basically will establish a much cleaner river and therefore a cleaner bay ultimately. I've done these permits in other cities, generally speaking, as long as we're staying inside of the fifty-foot landward side. We do not have to have a public hearing. It's a staff approval, but we're welcome to be here today to present our case and answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE dash twenty-one dash zero four. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and you would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
I'm Patty Triplett. We are next-door neighbors. We live at twenty-four thirty-six Sterling Point Drive. We do know the slope of this land. We are in agreement with this. We know how conscientious these gentlemen are and that they, you know, do honor the environment and what's going on there. They've even, you know, tried to stabilize what they have there, and it's, we're in agreement with it being there. Again, we're the next-door neighbors that the fence would be going alongside of our lot and all that, but I think they have planned it out well, and I think they do appreciate the environment and take care of, everything we've seen, they take care of the environment and do have that foremost in their mind for this. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if there is anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address CBE dash twenty-one dash zero four, you may come forward, state your name, and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mister Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any further discussion on CBE dash twenty-one dash zero four? If there aren't any, the chair's in need of a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to deny CBE twenty-one dash zero four.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. We have a motion and a second to deny CBE dash twenty-one dash zero four. As I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. A yes vote is that you agree to deny. A no vote is that you disagree. So, Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Page.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
This item is denied by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, S dash twenty-one dash zero two Highland Biltmore. Thomas D. Ford and Teresa Coxford request the closure of a portion of an alleyway that will be evenly divided and maintained by all the adjoining property owners. The closure area is adjacent to the applicant's daycare center at six-oh-three Hanson Avenue and abuts two-hundred, two-zero-four, and two-zero-eight Truxton Avenue. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property for single-family residential, low-to-medium density. The property is the right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name's Thomas Ford and my wife Teresa Coxford, and we're here today to, we strongly like to recommend closing this alleyway. I think it's called Paper Street. It's in between, on the side of the daycare itself. Currently, for the last two, three decades, the neighbors and ourselves, we've been maintaining this property, cutting it and so forth. But as you know, in Portsmouth, unfortunately, the increase of crime is really becoming on the rise, and we have a daycare center, and we just want a positive, loving environment, safe, safe, I can't stress that enough, a safe environment for our future leaders here in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Mister Ford? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item S dash twenty-one dash zero two. I do have one registered speaker with Mister George E. Eason Jr. Come forward. You have up to five minutes to speak.
First of all, good afternoon to everyone present, Planning Commission, all of our friends and neighbors in Portsmouth, Virginia. I live at Truxton, two-oh-four Truxton Avenue, which is the property that you can kind of see on the left where those bushes are. We've been living there since January of nineteen ninety-four, and for approximately twenty, twenty-two years, I made sure that it looked neat like you see the rest of it. But I kind of got tired of, after my, well, ride lawnmower broke down, kind of got tired of maintaining the city's property right there, but what I want you to know is that area has been used for all sorts of unsavory things. At one point, we had some neighbors that had some prostitutes running back and forth, and they would go down that alleyway and do whatever, and also there used to be cars that would go there and park there in the middle of the night. So, we have a lot of children. My next-door neighbors are the white hairs. They have children. They have a trampoline right there, and then we have the Ford's daycare, and there are a lot of children. And if we close that in, we can cut down on a lot of the unsavory activity that happens in our alleyway. We would appreciate it, and I just thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item S dash twenty-one dash zero two. If there is someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
How you doing today? My name is Darius Childs. I live at two-eleven Montclair Avenue, which is the house right behind the fence of the daycare. I have to agree with them. I've been there for about three years, and it's been a constant traffic of just crime and just individuals running from other crime situations down the street, and I just agree with my neighbors here that if we could just maybe close it up or like the proposal stated, dividing it up between the properties, either way, I don't care, as long as something is done just to help out, because I got kids too. I got two little girls, and you know, it's just hard trying to maintain their protection if you got constant things to worry about. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any, Mister Mark?
Good afternoon again, Mister Chair, Commissioners, and other neighbors. There is something really, really inspiring about the idea of the neighbors holding this property equally divided to improve the neighborhood as a whole. It's a very community-oriented idea, and it appeals to me. The only, the only use I could see that might be better overall would be if the city of Portsmouth chose to develop that land as a linear park. We have a few of them elsewhere, but the city has not had that as part of any plan that's been developed for green space to date, and the way the gears turn in the bureaucracy, it's not something that's likely to happen in the short term. I would throw that out as a future idea and ask you to approve the current proposal. Should the city become interested at a later date in developing it, I'm sure that a reasonable accommodation could be arrived at to reacquire the property. In the meantime, this looks like a solution that would make for a stronger neighborhood, so I am in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like to address S dash twenty-one dash zero two? Appearing to be none, Mister Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any further discussion on S dash twenty-one dash zero two? There being none, the chair's in need of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve S dash twenty-one dash zero two.
With conditions?
With conditions, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Motion and second to approve S dash twenty-one dash zero two. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Page.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero with conditions. Our next item, SNC dash twenty-one dash zero three Victory Village. Heather Hardeman, Vice President for Administration and Chief Financial Officer of Tidewater Community College, requests a permanent street name change for a quarter-mile portion of Freedom Avenue between Victory Boulevard and Freedom Avenue Roundabout from its current designation to the name TCC Drive. In recognition of the adjacent Tidewater Community College Portsmouth campus, the future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as transportation. The property is public right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth. The applicant has requested a deferral to our December the seventh, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. We now need a motion to defer this item.
Commissioners, we are in need of a motion to defer SNC dash twenty-one dash zero three.
I'd like to make a motion to defer SNC dash twenty-one dash zero three to the December seventh, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second to defer.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. We have a motion and a second to defer. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Page.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
This item is approved to defer by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, UP dash twenty-one dash seventeen Prentice Park. Lloyd Vaughn Jr. with J. Investments Corporation requests a use permit for four townhomes at eight-sixteen Randolph Street. The property is zoned Neighborhood Mixed Use, NMU, and is further described as Tax Map fifty-five... Fifty-Five, parcel sixty-six. The parcel will be developed at a density of twelve units per acre. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends commercial development for the property. Will the applicant or representative for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Lloyd Vaughn with J. Investment, and the proposed project at eight sixteen Randolph Street, the ultimate plan would be to try to develop four-
Sir, if you could speak up a moment?
I'm sorry.
If you could speak up a little bit?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. The plan is to ultimately develop four single-family townhomes, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, with off-street parking and the normal modern amenities to include stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, fireplace, ceramic tile in the bathrooms, and laundry area, also provide water-dry area, central heat and air for the project. Also, to be able to provide what almost, you know, difficult now, an affordable residential option, as expensive as single-home prices are right now, hopefully this will be a less expensive option for single-family residents.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Mister Vaughn? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-21-17. I have no registered speakers. If there is anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name, and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mister Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any further discussion of UP-21-17? If there are none, the chair's in need of a motion for UP-21-17 with conditions.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion for the approval of UP-21, uh, UP-21-17 with conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, I'd like to second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Motion and second to approve UP, UP-21-17. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of five to zero with conditions.
Commissioners, are there any other items that we need to discuss today? Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mister Baldwin, any additional items?
Yes, sir, Mister Chairman. I'm gonna call on Meg Pittinger here to do a short introduction of our newest staff member.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I want to introduce to you Amy Mervine. Amy, could you just stand up a little bit there? She's our brand-new senior planner, just started yesterday. We stole her from the engineering department and rescued her and brought her over into the planning department. We're gonna immerse her in everything planning and zoning to the best of our ability, but I think right now it's been kind of drinking off the fire hose for her. We've just been immersing her in everything. She's working with Julie on the historic district stuff and the downtown design committee, and we're gonna have her working with Brian on some of the subdivision stuff, and she's very fluent in GIS, so she's gonna be helping us with our mapping and hopefully broadening our scope of what we can do in terms of that, and we're super excited for her to be working with us, and we welcome her aboard heartily, and so we had her come to the planning commission so she could see how all the gears work and how all these things that we work on play out in the public realm.
Well, welcome. We think you've come to a great department, and I think you will be a great asset. It's a pleasure to have you.
Yes.
Anything further, Mister Baldwin?
That is it, Mister Chairman.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today.
That is correct.
Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.